Welcome to the announcement ceremony of the 2022 State Board of Education District Teachers of the Year and finalists for Ohio Teacher of the Year. My name is Angela Dickey. I am the state coordinator for the Ohio Teacher of the Year program. Thanks for joining this celebration today. The Ohio Teacher of the Year program has a long legacy dating back to 1964, and we are so excited to announce our newest cohort of outstanding educators. We're also very grateful for the support of the State Board of Education as well as community members and educators from across Ohio who served as territory leads and on our regional selection committees. We couldn't do this work without them, and we greatly appreciate them. Want to thank them for all of their commitment to support the program. Now, let's get this party started with our own State Superintendent of Public Instruction, Mr. Paolo Di Maria. Take it away, Paolo.
Thanks so much, Angela. As many of you know, one of the greatest highlights of my year of any academic year really is all the events related to our Teacher of the Year program. I love this program because ultimately it's a celebration of teachers and a celebration of great teaching, because that's ultimately what we do in the way that we run this program and create these opportunities to celebrate. So, we really honor all teachers on a day by day. And so, to all teachers, educators, and everyone who works in education, I just want to say thank you all so very, very much for everything you do each and every day for the children in Ohio. It's such important work. It's a creative endeavor. We are working to create the future of the state, of our communities, of our nation, and we entrust these amazing individuals to do that work. We know from the research that teachers matter the most. When we designed our strategic plan, "Each Child, Our Future," the very first strategy that we outlined, strategy number one, is about quality teaching, because the research tells us that the single most important contributor outside of the home to a child's success is a child's teacher. And consequently, that quality teaching is something we all commit ourselves to, and I have always found that teachers in particular are always on the lookout for how they can be better, how they can be, create a greater learning opportunity, a better learning experience, but not just that. It goes beyond the learning experience and to supporting children in meeting their needs and really creating the conditions for them to be successful. Great teaching also picks up on a couple of the key core principles in our strategic plan, namely the idea of equity, making sure each child, just like the title of the plan says, making sure each child has a quality educational experience and is put on the road to success, and that it happens in a quality school setting where students can feel the joy of learning, the joy of belonging to the family that is a school. We had such amazing nominations this year. It's every year, I think we have a great group, but then year after year, I'm always impressed with how many more great applications come in the door and the exceptional talents and skills that we're recognizing. So, I want to thank all the people who nominated teachers this year. That could include superintendents, principals, colleagues, students, parents, people in the community. I want to especially thank Governor DeWine, who helped increase the number of nominations, because he used his Twitter account to promote the nomination process. We got almost 270 nominations, which is the highest we've had in any year, and 110 applications were actually submitted. And what an amazing group of teachers we are celebrating today. The district level teachers of the year, 11 outstanding educators from all across the state. We have all sorts of disciplines represented, science, history, art, English, mathematics, and they're not only experts in their subject area, but they also epitomize what great teaching is all about. When you read their applications, you get this sense that these are people who are loving and caring. They bring joy to their classrooms, joy to their colleagues, and to their communities. They're innovative. They're focused on not only being excellent in their discipline areas, but meeting the needs of the children that they serve, the schools that they serve, the communities that they serve. They're leaders for equity and leaders for success, and they bring heart and soul and spirit, commitment and dedication, and they're ambassadors for education in this state. So, I want to congratulate each and every one of the 11 2022 State Board District Teachers of the Year. We are so proud of you. You are so exceptional, and we celebrate with you and your colleagues about your tremendous accomplishment. Today, I am pleased to be joined by two outstanding individuals. First, President Laura Kohler. She is the president of the State Board of Education. She'll have a role a little bit later in this event. She is a great friend and a wonderful leader and feels so strongly about the importance of our Teacher of the Year program. And we're also joined by Anthony Coy Gonzalez, who is the 2021 Ohio Teacher of the Year. He teaches at the Ohio State School for the Deaf, and in fact, is joining us today from Space Camp in Huntsville, Alabama, which is one of the things that teachers of the year get to do. He's being joined by all the other 50 teachers of the year in this exceptional experience. So, Anthony, I want to turn it over to you and have you share some words of encouragement and reflection for all of us.
Thank you, Paolo. You know, families, friends, and colleagues of our 2022 Teachers of the Year, today is a celebration in which you have played a vital role. I know that you share in today's excitement. To our new cohort of honored teachers, congratulations. I am in awe of your commitment to your students, to the contributions you have made to your school community, and I feel privileged to be a part of this celebration today. Our schools are better because of your dedication and leadership. Thank you. Now, the moment we've been waiting for. It is my great pleasure to introduce to you the 2022 State Board of Education District Teachers of the Year. State Board District One, Joe Foster from Hardin Northern Local. Nominated by the school superintendent, Mr. Foster goes beyond the classroom walls to create learning experiences for students. From a living history day for both elementary and secondary students, to learn from volunteers dressed in character to a student club he called "The History Brigade" that meets during lunch or even the summer trip to Gettysburg with interested students. On his own time, I might add, Mr. Foster has raised the bar for our entire teaching staff here in the Hardin Northern School District. His example as a professional and dedication to students has made our district much stronger. Congratulations.
Hello, everyone. I'm honored to be representing all the fabulous teachers at Hardin Northern School as well as State Board District One. With me today is my inspiration and support, my wife Carrie and my daughter Emma. I'd also like to give a big thanks to my parents, Carl and Marjorie Foster, and especially a big thank you to the entire polar bear community from our school board, our administration, the faculty, our staff, and especially the great parents and students that make every day a great day to learn at Hardin Northern. My name is Joe Foster. I'm the 2022 State Board District One Teacher of the Year, and I educate Ohio.
State Board District Two, Kurt Russell from Oberlin City Schools, nominated by a parent. Mr. Russell is a great teacher and role model for his students in his history class and children in the community. He does not just teach social studies, but uses history as his medium to teach children. His caring and authentic desire to see students to succeed in life is what makes students want to make him proud. Even as a basketball coach, he sets high expectations on the court, at school, and in life. It is his rapport with the students that sets him apart. A former student recently created a scholarship in his name because of the profound impact he made on her life as well as many other students. In fact, most seniors request a letter of recommendation from him in their college applications. Without a doubt, Mr. Russell deserves to be recognized.
Thank you so much, Anthony, for that warm introduction. Hello, everyone. It is such an honor and humbling experience to represent School Board District Two. Special mention to Oberlin Senior High School and all the fabulous teachers in Oberlin City Schools. My wife could not be with me today, and my children are in college, so I want to give them a special love and thank them for their support as well. My name is Kurt Russell, State Board District Two Teacher of the Year, and I educate Ohio.
State Board District Three, Jen Stormer from Northmont City Schools, nominated by an administrator. Jen's dedication and contribution to science and STEM education are vast, and her reputation as a teacher of excellence is revered among her students and colleagues. It is her ability to relate and build relationships that brings the excitement to students for pursuing science careers. Beyond that, she has achieved much on behalf of her students through her partnerships with community and leadership and equity. Jen is an extraordinary educator and person, which is rare.
Hello, everyone. I'm so honored to be representing the fantastic teachers from Northmont City Schools as well as State Board District Three. With me today is my husband, Jason, and my daughters, Ally and Kinsey. I'm so honored and humbled in receiving this recognition. My name is Jen Stormer, the 2022 State Board District Three Teacher of the Year, and I educate Ohio.
State Board District Four, Kristin Lazuda from Mason City Schools, nominated by a parent. Kristin Lazuda is one of a kind. You don't often meet educators who think of the whole person as much as she does. She willingly goes out of her way to find material for each student that is purposeful, relevant, and interesting. She cares deeply for each of her students and their needs, and her students love her. She believes that the potential of each child is accessible if you get to know their unique abilities through multiple ways. You just know, this is her passion.
Hi, everyone. Thank you, Anthony. I am so humbled and honored to be representing State Board District Four and the remarkable teachers of Mason City Schools. With me today is my precious family, my husband Chris, and our daughters Avery and Caroline. I feel so lucky to have been teaching for nearly 20 years. My amazing students inspire and teach me every day, and I'm so grateful for this opportunity to serve as a voice for Ohio students as well as to serve among the exemplary educators in this cohort. I'm very grateful to my district Mason City Schools and to my wonderful family for this honor. My name is Kristin Lazuda. I'm the 2022 State Board District Four Teacher of the Year, and I educate Ohio.
State Board District Five, Lisa Saliers from Chagrin Exempted Village, nominated by a parent. Mrs. Saliers has been a steady force during the uncertainty of this pandemic for my high school during these difficult times. Mrs. Sal, as her students call her, is an expert in biology, yet she transfers knowledge in a way that is engaging despite the challenges of teaching virtually. As a parent, I love that she teaches those important fringe skills of honoring a commitment, meeting a deadline, staying organized, and communicating clearly. She is respectful as she helps them practice instead of shaming students when they forget a well-rehearsed protocol. Mrs. Sal is far more than a teacher. She is a friend and a mentor who truly cares about the life lessons uncovered in the classroom.
Thank you, Anthony. You've made Ohio very proud as well. Hello, everybody. I'm so honored to be representing all the teachers at Chagrin Falls Exempted Village Schools as well as State Board District Five. I am truly honored to have my name mentioned among these other amazing educators, and I would like to thank Teresa Bedar for my nomination and my family and friends for all their support. I feel as if you are only as great as everyone around you, and I feel super fortunate to be surrounded with such great colleagues and administration, the kind of people that push me to elevate my passion for education in new and exciting ways every day. My name is Lisa Saliers, the 2022 State Board District Five Teacher of the Year, and I educate Ohio.
State Board District Six, Allison Tomlin from Upper Arlington City Schools, nominated by the school superintendent. Allison believes that providing opportunities for students to share their hearts and thoughts with her is a priority in her classroom. She uses their passions to drive her instruction. In both her professional and her personal life, she takes the wisdom she has acquired from memories of her own fifth-grade teacher. She remembers being taught about the values of lending your heart to serving others, leading with your voice, providing safe places to debate and disagree, and to find success wherever life may take you. Allison's peers and students know without a doubt that in times of celebration, frustration, triumph, or struggle, that she listens to them, hears them, and responds to them with compassion and care.
Hi, everybody. I'm so honored to be representing the dedicated teachers of Upper Arlington City Schools as well as State Board District Six. I'm here today with one of my lifelong supporters, my mama, and I would like to thank my students for sharing their stories with me. I would like to thank my colleagues for helping me grow, and I want to thank my family and my friends for their continual support for my passion for education. I am so humbled and honored to be here today with this amazing group of educators who serve the state of Ohio and their students with all of their hearts. My name is Allison Tomlin, and I'm the 2022 State Board District Six Teacher of the Year, and I educate Ohio.
State Board District Seven, Maggie Oliver from Akron Public Schools, nominated by an administrator. Maggie Oliver is an advocate for her students. She works to engage, inspire, and impact all the students that she meets and finds ways to make her teaching engaging and relevant so that her lessons reach all learners. She has a passion for building relationships with her students and their families, and works hard to lay a strong foundation for success for all her learners. Mrs. Oliver is an instructional leader who puts the needs of everyone before herself and finds a way to be of service. As an example, she made vests for all our building leadership team members and two sets of masks for each student to have when they returned to school last fall. She does not work for accolades, but uses her exceptional, quiet passion to be an advocate for her students.
Thank you, Anthony, and I am so proud to be among the educators, the strong educators here at Akron Public Schools as well as State Board District Seven. I'm joined today, if you can see, by my husband Don, my son Sam, my sister Janet, my wonderful principal, Monica Davis right over there, and all these wonderful, supportive, caring educators and peers. And I don't think my heart is big enough to express how much gratitude I have for the support that I get of my community that I'm sitting right in the middle of, and also, I just am so really honored to be sitting here, to be receiving recognition among all these wonderful educators, these district teachers of the year. My name is Maggie Oliver. I'm the 2022 State Board District Seven Teacher of the Year, and I teach Ohio.
State Board District Eight, Nancy Miller from Canton Local Schools, nominated by a student. Nancy Miller is the best educator I have ever had throughout my entire school career. She never leaves a student behind. She ensures that each of her students understands the content and generally uses three different strategies to make sure of this. There is usually a notes portion to first understand and read up on the content, then a visual, and then a lab. If you still do not understand, she will find another way until you get it. One of her best qualities is that she is always looking for innovation among her students. Instead of just handing over answers, she creates thinkers that can solve their own problems. She makes every student feel welcome and safe and strives for everyone to be successful inside of the classroom and out. I have witnessed her help students apply to colleges, apply for jobs, and even fill out financial aid forms for college. She always goes above and beyond.
Hello. I am so proud and privileged to represent the amazing teachers and staff of Canton Local Schools as well as the State Board District Eight. With me today are the student who nominated me, Ms. Mara Maylie, and my principal, Mr. Jeff Moore. I am humbled to have this opportunity to represent all the educators who work tirelessly to educate and motivate their students. My name is Nancy Miller, the 2022 State Board District Eight Teacher of the Year, and I educate Ohio.
State Board District Nine, Amber Harris from Bloom Carroll Local Schools, nominated by a parent. Amber Harris is an amazing teacher who takes her time with her students and always puts their needs first. She shows kindness and care and continually encourages them. As an intervention specialist, she works in an environment that can have unexpected pivots, yet she continues to keep the students on track. Since my child has been in her class this year, his grades have improved. His attention level has increased, his love for school has grown, and he has shown improvement in all subjects. He has learned to work independently more often. She takes each child and teaches and helps them with what they need and puts their best interests at heart. She does not expect her students to be able to complete each task the same way, but works with them individually to find their strengths and helps them to better themselves. I believe Amber Harris is a fine example of what an educator should be.
Thank you, Anthony. Hello, everyone. I am so humbled and honored to be representing all of the fabulous teachers in my school district of Bloom Carroll as well as the State Board District Nine. I would like to give a quick shout out to all of my wonderful colleagues at Bloom Carroll Middle School as well as my husband and kids for all of their support and love throughout my career. My name is Amber Harris, the 2022 State Board District Nine Teacher of the Year, and I educate Ohio.
State Board District Ten, Tracy Huggins from Milford Exempted Village, nominated by the school superintendent. Focus and free exploration are some of the strategies Tracy Huggins implements to support student questions, ideas, and inquiry into the arts. Her ability to maintain rigor in the unified arts, yet balance it with the nurturing needs of her students, is impressive. She brings love and passion for the arts and a true dedication for children to express themselves, which makes a positive and profound difference in the classroom, the school building, and our district. It is her ongoing positive relationships that honor, foster care, and growth for all students. And it is because of her leadership and compassion that her students believe in her, love her, and trust her. Tracy is an art advocate who believes that the arts help to educate the whole child, providing safety for all children to be creative and to have their voices heard. providing safety for all children to be creative and to have their voices heard.
Thank you so much, Anthony, and hello, friends. I am so excited and honored to be representing all of Milford Exempted Village School District, as well as all of the teachers in District Ten. My husband and my kids are joining me today, along with the awesome Milford admin team, including Superintendent Spicer and Principal Selm, who nominated me. I am truly elated and humbled. My name is Tracy Huggins, the 2022 State Board District Ten Teacher of the Year, and I educate Ohio.
State Board District Eleven. Carla Neely from Cleveland Metropolitan School District. Nominated by an administrator. Ms. Carla Neely is a fantastic example of a teacher who works to find resources and opportunities for her students beyond the corridors of her school. Ms. Neely has applied and secured scholarships and donations, and has successfully entered her students into some of the most competitive math and science arenas. She has a unique opportunity to teach in an all-girls school, and while she knows that the opportunities for girls in STEM-related fields are widening, her goal is that her students will strive to achieve beyond what society expects. She leads by example, purposefully showing young girls what they might not see for themselves, and giving them the freedom to explore and learn along the way. When you get an opportunity to talk with Ms. Neely, she will bring a rich narrative about what achievement has been accomplished in her classroom. Big or small, it is always about what her students have learned and can take with them.
Thank you, Anthony. Hello, everyone. I am so honored to be representing Warner Girls Leadership Academy of the Cleveland Metropolitan School District, as well as all of the hardworking educators who are a part of District Eleven. With me virtually and in spirit are my family, friends, as well as the school district administration and school administration. I am appreciative of all of their support during this exciting journey. My name is Carla Neely, and I am the 2022 State Board District Eleven Teacher of the Year, and I educate Ohio.
Congratulations to you all. And now, sending it over to President Kohler for some exciting news.
Thank you so much, Anthony. I really appreciate everyone who is here today. Like Superintendent Di Maria, it is no secret that this is one of my favorite times of the year. I too love the Ohio Teacher of the Year program, because it puts the emphasis exactly where it should be as we think about education, and that is on the spectacular work that classroom teachers are doing to raise expectations and achievement for each of their students, while they're working collaboratively with their communities and their families to do their very best every single day for the students of Ohio. The State Board of Education is very, very proud to support this program. We realize how important it is to honor and recognize the great work that teachers do for their students and their communities. So once again, thanks to each of you for everything that you do. This is so exciting, and my job here today is to announce the four finalists for the 2022 Teach Ohio Teacher of the Year. So in no particular order, and I'm going to pause after each name so that we can recognize each individual as their name is called, in no particular order, our first finalist is Mr. Kurt Russell from Oberlin City Schools. Congratulations, Kurt. Our second finalist is Ms. Allison Tomlin from Upper Arlington Schools. Congratulations, Allison. Third on the list is Ms. Maggie Oliver from Akron Public Schools. And again, congratulations, Maggie. And our fourth finalist for this year is Ms. Carla Neely from Cleveland Metropolitan School District. And again, congratulations to Carla. So congratulations to all of our four finalists. You've worked so hard to get to this place, and you've proven yourselves to be leaders. Take advantage of the opportunities that this journey will offer. And on behalf of the State Board of Education, congratulations to all of you for a job extremely well done. Thank you.
And thank you, Laura, for that great reveal. And let me add my congratulations to all of the finalists. So excited for you and for what you have accomplished. As Anthony put it so well, I am awed, I am awed by all of you for everything that you do, just as I am awed by the great work that teachers do across the state each and every day for our children. It's such a challenging task, but one that so many approach with great joy, with great passion, with love, with care, and I think we saw that in the different introductions that we heard Anthony present today. So thanks to the entire cohort, and thanks to all the teachers across the state that you represent for the terrific work that goes on in the interest of helping every child, each child in Ohio, achieve success. Thanks again, President Kohler. Thanks, Anthony, for your great participation today, and now I'm going to throw it back to Angela.
Thanks, Palo. So these amazing teachers, all eleven, will serve as ambassadors for their students and schools and as leaders for quality education everywhere. They'll begin their year of recognition and service today through June of 2022, and this year they have the opportunity to network with other Ohio Teachers of the Year, other state teachers of the year around the nation. They can apply to be an Ohio Teacher Leader Liaison, and they culminate their experiences with the Ohio Teacher Leader Summit. The four finalists will be interviewed by our state selection committee on August 6, and one of these teachers will be selected to serve as the 2022 Ohio Teacher of the Year, representing our state at the National Teacher of the Year Program. That announcement will be made once school is started. You can find out more about the Ohio Teacher of the Year Program, Ohio Teacher Leadership Initiatives, the Teacher Leader Summit, and the I Educate Ohio Initiative by visiting our website at www.education.ohio.gov. Now I'm going to ask our 2021 Ohio Teacher of the Year, Anthony Coy Gonzalez, to wrap this up for us. Go ahead, Anthony.
Thank you, Angela. And thank you so much for joining us today and helping to celebrate Ohio's 2022 cohort of teachers of the year. Lastly, I want to thank all Ohio educators. You have answered the call to make a difference and positively impact the future. My name is Anthony Coy Gonzalez, the 2021 Ohio Teacher of the Year and 2022 Ohio Teacher Fellow, and I educate Ohio.